Yeah, yeah. Okay. I'd like to call to order the Sherwood City Council's July 16th regular city council meeting. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Council President Henderson is absent. Councilor Grant is absent. Councilor Folsom?
Here.
Councilor Butterfield?
Here.
Councilor Langer?
Here.
And Councilor Clark is also absent.
Okay, before we get started, I want to explain why we do the agenda the way we do. Tonight, we have a lot of resolutions. They're not time-consuming, but we have to get certain things signed in certain time limits, so we have quite a few of those, but they won't take long. Proclamations, presentations, we always do first so that everybody's here, so they can honor everybody who's done something for the community. The citizen comments are now before the council comments and before the staff reports, so we have moved them up a bit, but we should get through the resolutions because that's regular business. We have to get that done. So, our first item is the consent agenda, which is the approval of the June 3rd meeting minutes, approval of June 4th, 2013 minutes, approval of June 12th, 2013 minutes, approval of June 18th minutes, approval of July 22nd minutes, and Resolution 2013-040, a resolution to ratify contract agreement between the City of Sherwood and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, and to authorize the City Manager to sign the successor collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of agreement between the City of Sherwood and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. The second resolution is 2013-041, resolution to ratify the contract agreement with the City of Sherwood and the Sherwood Police Officers Association, and to authorize the City Manager to sign the successor collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sherwood and the Sherwood Police Officers Association.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our next is the presentations. The first one, and Selma Broadhurst is here, I'm sure, is the Propagation Relay for Life, August 3rd and 4th, 2013. Whereas, the American Cancer Society is a nationwide, community-based voluntary health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. And whereas, by these efforts, the overall age-adjusted cancer mortality rate is declining for the first time in history, and will continue to do so. Whereas, people are alive today because the knowledge we have gained has translated directly into the prevention, early detection, and improved treatment. Whereas, the Relay for Life is unique in this community is that it blends fundraising, cancer awareness, prevention activities, fellowship, and support for cancer survivors. Whereas, Relay for Life is being community that takes up the fight against cancer, there is no finish line until we cure cancer. Whereas, the Sherwood chapter of the American Cancer Society will hold its ninth annual Relay for Life on August 3rd and 4th at the Sherwood High School. It goes 24 hours a day. Furthermore, I declare August 3rd and 4th, 2013, as Relay for Life Days in the City of Sherwood, and urge community support in the event at the Sherwood High School Field. And I want to thank our Citizen of the Year, Selma Broadhurst, who is one of the big pushers of this and keeps it going every year. So, thank you, Selma. Next proclamation, and I see the Robin Hood shirt out there. Whereas, the Sherwood Robin Hood Festival has been a longstanding tradition in the City of Sherwood, celebrating 60 years this year, so it's the big 6-0. Whereas, the Sherwood Robin Hood Festival Committee is made up entirely of volunteers from the community who have willingly given countless hours to make this a memorable and successful event for the community. Whereas, the 19th and 20th of July have been set aside for the Sherwood Robin Hood Festival. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Bill Middleton, Mayor of Sherwood, do hereby proclaim July 19th and 20th as Sherwood Robin Hood Festival Weekend in the City of Sherwood, and call upon all our citizens and surrounding communities to participate fully in all of the festive ceremonies, activities, and events in witness, I have signed and cause the seal of Sherwood affixed the 16th day of July 2013. And thank you, all your volunteers. So, I think there's only eight volunteers this year, isn't there? So, they do a lot of work, so that is just fantastic. Thank you. Okay, now we have another big one here. The Boys Baseball Champs. You want to stand up? And we have certificates for the ones that are here, and we're going to invite back the ones who couldn't make it. So, we're going to hold on to the ones who couldn't make it and give you certificates for the one who could make it. So, I'll be coming down, and we'll, the council will come down, and we'll hand you the certificates, and hey, you guys did a fantastic job.
Do you know him all, Phil?
Apple. Come on up here, guys.
Jake Reamer here.
No.
Alex Barzey. Oh, there you go. Colton Waker.
No.
Logan. I'm not going to say this. Say Apple.
Is he going to say it anyways?
Joseph. And Anthony Sherwood. Jacob. Before you sit down, tell everybody what you did, how many games you won, and everything else.
Well, we don't know the exact record. We started off pretty terrible, though, actually. We started off like 1 in 5, but we ended up winning 24 out of our last 26 games, leading us to a state title, which really means a lot to us as a team, and we hope it means a lot to the community, and we're just really thankful for all the support and help through the community, so.
Thank you much.
All right, we have another one. Is anybody from the Boys 4x400 Relay here? No?
Mayor, I talked with Coach Smith today, and he said he wanted to wait till a future date because he wanted to have more of the students available to participate in that, so his apologies, but there's a student in Sweden and some others are just out of town, so they couldn't make it tonight.
That's great. We'd like to have them all here. Any Eagle Scouts here? All right, the next presentation will be the swearing-in of police officer George Lopez by Chief Growth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Officer Lopez, why don't you come forward? And as he does that, a brief introduction. George Lopez was born in California, but grew up in the city of Toledo, Oregon, which I'm sure many of you know is just east of Newport. Officer Lopez attended Western Oregon University and graduated with his bachelor's degree. He attended and graduated from the Mid Valley Reserve Police Officer Training Academy and was a reserve police officer for the City of Independence for over three and a half years. And upon us hiring him, he left that position, so he was there right until we hired him. Officer Lopez is married and has children and is fluent in the Spanish language. And I would just point out that, very quick swearing-in, we'll go through just one sheet here, but we're certainly glad to have Officer Lopez aboard. He was planned July of last fiscal year as one of two replacement positions for folks that left, and then as a, for budget savings, he actually moved him to January. We didn't hire him in January, and then pushed it forward to July for additional savings. So, we're glad to have him on board and glad he's been, he's interested with us. So, without further ado. Let's see if we can make this work. Why don't you stand right here next to me, raise your right hand, repeat after me. You can face me, that's fine. I, George Lopez, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon, the laws and ordinances of the City of Sherwood, and the rules and regulations of the Sherwood Police Department, and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office of police officer during my continuance therein to the best of my ability, so help me God. Very good. You got through that. She's got the vest on, so we're safe. I'm going to have you sign these two things, right there, and then right here. You got a pen? So, Officer Lopez is now signing his oath of office, and then he will be signing the Criminal Justice Code of Ethics, which not only does the state, but we require that every one of our officers sign and adhere to.
I want to welcome Officer Lopez, and I saw you and Officer Rodriguez, we met down in the park, so it's seeing you again, so that's great. So, thank you very much, and I hope you enjoy it. New business. We're going to amend, there's going to be two amendments to the agenda. One of them is going to be pulling Resolution 2013-37, and the other is going to be adding Resolution 2013-042. The first new business is Ordinance 20-004, approving vacation of a public stormwater sewer easement located on private property and establishing a new public water easement adjusted boundary to match encroachment conditions. Mr. Galati?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The resolution before you is a correction that was created during the construction of the buildings over here from the development. Basically, there was an existing easement with a storm drain system in it, and the plans showed the easement on the civil portion of the drawings, but the architectural drawings didn't quite pick it up and identify it clearly. So, when they started to place the building footings and construct the building, they basically encroached upon the easement itself. The encroachment was about 2 feet into a 7 and 1/2-foot easement. We checked with Public Works and determined that the amount of the encroachment, if we were to reduce the easement, would still allow us, if we went that route, to still be able to get in and do work on the sewer line if we ever had to get into it, and not be a problem or an issue with the building itself. So, what we've done is, as a part of this process, is we have to come to you and get approval to vacate the easement, and then we will have the owners of the property provide us another easement that will match the encroachment limits of the building and reestablish that easement again, and we'll record both of these simultaneously, and that will take care of the issue.
So, the other property owner, they are in agreement with this?
Yes, they are.
Any other questions from council?
I'll make a motion.
I don't know the number. I'll second. Councilor Butterfield, you're going to motion to recapture and adopt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2013-004, an ordinance approving vacation of a public storm sewer easement located on private property and establishing a new public stormwater easement with adjusted boundary to match encroachment conditions. Councilor Clark is absent. Councilor Langer?
Aye.
Councilor Butterfield?
Aye.
Councilor Folsom?
Aye.
Councilor Grant is absent. Council President Henderson is absent. Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next item is Resolution 2013-036, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Clean Water Services to utilize system development charges, funds, and the construction of the Tonquin Employment Area Sanitary Sewer Upgrade Project.
Again, this resolution is based on the city's continuing efforts to upgrade systems based on our sanitary sewer master plan. This project is identified both in the city's master plan and Clean Water Services' master plan as being necessary for future development of the area. The system basically is coming close to being maxed out as far as the ability to add more flow to it, so with the Tonquin Employment Area with a potential of that being developed in the future, we're trying to get ahead of it so that we're not behind the 8-ball. As part of this, we have city funds to take care of the city portion of this, to get Clean Water Services' portion of funding, the SDC funds that are available through the agreements we have with Clean Water Services. This resolution and authorizing the City Manager to enter into an IGA with Clean Water Services will make those funds available to us, and it's approximately somewhere between 38% and 42% of the construction cost that will be recouped through reimbursement.
Any council questions?
Just so that we can all be clear, where does the funding from the city's side come from?
We have our sanitary STCs that pay for this.
So, the sanitary STC, system development charges come when there's new construction of businesses and residences, or just one or the other?
The STCs are levied against residences and businesses when they are constructed, basically. So, this is just a standard fund that we have that's built for this stuff. It's not for maintenance. It is for-
Capital improvements.
Capital improvements, and that includes upgrades to infrastructure based on flow capacity.
I appreciate you giving us all that explanation. Thanks.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we recapture and adopt, or just pass this resolution 2013-36?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Our next resolution is 2013-038, authorizing the City Manager to execute a construction contract for the Villa Road Wall Repair Project.
This resolution is to repair an existing wall that is located between Southwest Wildlife Haven Court and Southwest Villa Road. The current wall is along a tributary, and the existing wall is currently failing, and some of the wall is actually falling into the tributary. And so, due to this failure, there is a considerable amount of bank erosion that is occurring, and slope stabilization problems are occurring. Due to these issues, Public Works has put forth maintenance funds to repair this wall and to restore the wall quality swell that is behind it. There is also a mitigation plan to restore plantings after the construction of it has been completed. We put this project out to bid, and we received three bids. The high bid was $140,769.45, and the low bid was $91,414.11. The engineers estimate for the project was $116,000. The lowest responsive bidder was JJ and L Excavation, and what I'm requesting that we get authorization to enter into a contract with JJ and L Excavation for the construction of this project.
One thing I want to add, and you're Craig Christiansen, Engineering Associate, just to make sure we have that on there. Questions from council?
Once again, funding, this comes from the maintenance fund for-
This is a storm maintenance fund from Public Works.
And those monies are collected through fees over-
I believe that's the monthly fees that are part of the storm water fund.
Yep. That's right. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 2013-038.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next resolution is 2013-042, a resolution amending Resolution 2013-34 and Resolution 2013-035, revising membership of the special committee to advise the City Council on possible referral to voters of ordinances establishing new business regulations. Assistant City Manager Pesimer?
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. I have the trick mic tonight, so just quickly, there have been a couple resolutions that council has passed in order to set up the special committee to advise the council on potential ordinances regarding new business regulations. Those were done fairly quickly in order to try to give the committee as much time as we possibly could to bring back ordinances for council consideration that they may choose to refer to the voters. So, in June 18th, Resolution 2013-034 was approved. That kind of set up the formation of the committees and the basic rules of how it would operate, and specifically identified the number of members that would be on the committee. Subsequently, Resolution 2013-035 was approved at a subsequent meeting where particular individuals were named to the committee. So, essentially, there were nine members on the committee where five were residents of the City of Sherwood and four conducted business within the City of Sherwood. That committee has been meeting, they've met three times in the last less than week, and plan to continue to meet through the month of July and into the beginning of August. They've been working really well together, very collaboratively, making good progress from my estimation on what council has set them out to do, and, but they lost two members, two members indicated that they wanted to be removed from the committee prior to actually their first meeting. And so, given the fact that they've been working well, we prepared this resolution, just mostly as a starting point, to change it from nine members down to seven members, which is essentially the remainder of the committee where four members would be residents of the city, and three would conduct business within the city. So, this resolution would adopt, first off, Resolution 2013-034 to change it from nine to seven, and then Resolution 2013-035 to remove the names from that resolution that appointed specific members to the committee.
Council comments? I was at the meeting last night, and the committee also wanted it, they approved it too, so they're for it, so. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 2013-042.
All in favor? Oh, we need a second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our last item on the agenda prior to citizen comments is the public hearing. Resolution 2013-039, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. Julie Blums?
Good evening. So, before you-
Excuse me, Mayor. Julie, I need to read the public hearing statement. That's right. The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on Ordinance 2013-039, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. The purpose of the hearing is to allow the public to provide testimony on the above said item. The order of business that the council will follow is to hear the staff report, receive public testimony, receive additional staff comments, and then questions from the council. The hearing will then be closed, and no further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, as this hearing will be recorded, and limit your testimony to four minutes.
All right, so before you tonight, there are three items on the supplemental budget. The first item is a transfer from the street capital fund to the urban renewal capital fund. What this is, is back in 2010, we took out a loan from the urban renewal for street projects in the downtown area, and street projects, even though it's funded by urban renewal, we typically run those out of our street fund, and so the loan proceeds were put into the street fund. When the contracts were bid for the Phase 2 construction of downtown streets, they were bid under urban renewal, so we just need to move those loan proceeds back into the urban renewal so we can make the payments from that fund. So, that's the first item. The second item, we brought to you a couple weeks ago when we brought the contract forward, this is for the pavement management projects and the street operations fund. Simply that the contract services did not get appropriated during the budget process. They were inadvertently left in the fund balance, so this is just appropriating them so that we can spend them for our contract services for pavement management projects for the year. And then the third item is we put in for $5,000 for the special election for these business regulation ordinances. That wasn't part of the budget process. That wasn't contemplated, so we're trying to be proactive and make sure we have funds available for that election when it comes up. Any questions?
I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have any citizens that would like to comment?
These papers aren't for this. Susan Claus, 222-111, Southwest Pacific Highway. My comment on this is, none of the materials were available on the website or in the library until Monday for any of this. So, here it is, Tuesday. It's 223 pages. Don't we have some kind of stipulation that we've got to have materials available to the citizens at least five days in advance? Thanks. Can she answer?
Yeah, sure.
The agenda was posted on Tuesday. Once the agenda is posted, those documents are ready. The reason the packet was not posted to the website is because it lacked the documents of the consent items, which were the minutes, all of the documents. Once that agenda is posted, those documents are available to the public. It's just a matter of the public requesting them.
Okay, so you don't automatically put them on the website, so-
Once the packet is complete, the complete packet goes on the website.
But until then, you, the citizens have to go in front of, or get the- available for that election when it comes up. Any questions?
I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have any citizens that would like to comment?
These papers aren't for this. Susan Claus, 222-111, Southwest Pacific Highway. My comment on this is, none of the materials were available on the website or in the library until Monday for any of this. So, here it is, Tuesday. It's 223 pages. Don't we have some kind of stipulation that we've got to have materials available to the citizens at least five days in advance? Thanks. Can she answer?
Yeah, sure.
The agenda was posted on Tuesday. Once the agenda is posted, those documents are ready. The reason the packet was not posted to the website is because it lacked the documents of the consent items, which were the minutes, all of the documents. Once that agenda is posted, those documents are available to the public. It's just a matter of the public requesting them.
Okay, so you don't automatically put them on the website, so...
Once the packet is complete, the complete packet goes on the website.
But until then, you, the citizens have to go in front of, or get the documents from you?
They can request them if they're not posted.
Okay. Well, again, that's a change of what it used to be. Everything used to be posted, so I don't know what to do because we're asking for changes to the budget that we just passed, and I don't feel that there was enough time. Thank you.
Anybody else comment?
Jim wants to.
Yeah, I've got his form here.
Robert James Claus, 222-111, Southwest Pacific Highway. I find it a little bit strange that we have an accountant. We have two business people. We have to question that. But, we're now doing a budget, and if you say to the staff, "I want to know what you collected in development fees, SDCs, TIFs, MISTFs. I want to know how much grant money you've collected. I want to know how much bonds you've done. I want to hit that at a pinch, on a push of a button." I don't want to have to have a Freedom of Information Act to find out what's occurred. Now, this is a pretty simple question. Your system development credits on houses are paybacks for infrastructure we supposedly Now, you manipulate those like $500,000 and vote on the ordinance. One way or another, somebody's getting our development fees. Now, I bet I'm not much of an accountant, but I am a pretty good urban land economist. When I find somebody that is using my money, and that is the landowner's money you took away from them, it's a direct drop in their price, unless you, of course, give it back to them on an eight million or a MISTF, but we'll let that go. That's money sold in public trust, but we don't know what's held in public trust, and we haven't known ever since we brought Ross Schultz here. From then on, it was mother barred the door. Our money was nobody's money. Now, if I ask, "What did a capital project cost for your benefit bill, not if the contractors made it work or didn't work like the plaza, just how much did you pay?", you can't tell me. Now, wait a minute. It's a capitalizable item, Robin. It's what you call a capitalizable item. It's an asset that's going to last longer than it takes you to walk home. We don't know what you're capitalizing, but it appears, in addition to the 18-point blah-blah percent, you take off of that development money and give it to your staff to run it, another 40% disappear. Now, what is the big deal with having a forensic audit? Because my numbers are 50 millions missing. Give it away, poof, gone with the wind. Why don't you stop this and start going back on those capital expenses? And finding out what you collected and what you collected in grants before you go forward? It's almost a silly question to ask a city. What have you done with the money you collected from the landowners, from the stadium grants? What did you spend it on? And what is your contract price for what you did? Not what you spent. You can't tell me how much you spent on Canars Square, tied upside down. I'll give Greg Gibbons this. At least he was a truthful manipulator. I don't know. I said, if you take what you have expensed over here, it could be as high as $20 million, which Craig didn't argue with. Now, would it be too much to get you to go back and do that? Rather than worry about taking some more money out of urban renewal to pay your overdraft, when you take that money out of urban renewal, if your tax base doesn't go up, the children of Oregon suffer. Not our kids, all of the state.
Thank you, Jim.
Matty, what's that about?
Do I have any more public comment on this? Gene?
Eugene Stewart, PLO Box 534, Sherwood, Oregon. One of the things that's a little confusing is that when Mr. Gibbons first came, I sat down with him, and he could not show me how he came up, or how the city came up with the numbers as compared to all the audit reports. In fact, he almost threw up his hands. But yet, Elaine Johnson came in, and that's the number you started with. But I've never been given anything that will show year by year where the money was spent, how much on which projects. But also on this, if this is on the city's side, does the urban renewal agency got the same problem mirrored on the other side? So, don't you need an adjustment on that side, too? I mean, if you're transferring the money from the city to the urban renewal agency, did you forget to do the same thing over on the urban renewal agency? It just makes sense to me. You've got to show the money coming in, money going out. So, where is it? Is it on the urban renewal? Is it already in the budget? How did you reconcile to balance it? I don't know. It seems like we need more study on where we're spending our money and how it's been spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Any more public comment? All right, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back to council.
Would you like to answer that last question? Do we need to do it on the urban renewal side as well? Why do we not?
We do not. Supplemental budgets are for expenditures only. Budget law only requires that we appropriate our expenditures, not our revenue. So, we do not need to do a supplemental to show the revenue over there, and we've already budgeted for the downtown streets project. So, it's, the expenditures are already budgeted, so we do not need to do a supplemental on the URA side to show the additional revenue.
So, they were budgeted on the city's side or the URA's side?
URA's side.
The URA's side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Maybe a little off topic. How did we come in on that budget?
Well, final numbers still aren't in, but it looks good. The project obviously was on schedule and under budget. I can't give you an exact amount of what that is, but we're looking somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 probably under budget for the project.
Great. Thank you.
Any more?
I've got just one question on the, on the third item with regard to the $5,000 special election. Is that the whole cost for the special committee?
It's an estimate. The way the elections work is it depends on how many jurisdictions have items on the ballot. The cost for the entire election is split amongst those jurisdictions, so it's an estimate at this point, but we looked at typically what an election would cost, and we're in the ballpark.
How about the, where's the balance of the rest of the cost for the special committee? For example, during the special committee, there's an attorney sitting over on this side of the group. Where's that? That money's not in that $5,000, is it?
No.
Where's that coming from?
At the moment, we're, we will have to be saving elsewhere to pay for it. Or we will have to come forward. If it turns out to be significant, we may have to come back with another supplemental.
I believe the numbers that we saw were significant yesterday in the estimates. It's probably not the time to talk about that, but we need to talk about that. I plan to. And council comments?
Yeah. Staff costs are already budgeted, so it's anything above and beyond that that we would need to take a look at.
Staff costs except for city attorney costs.
Correct.
And I believe the number that, and we'll get to this, was around $25,000 to $30,000 of city attorney time to staff that committee.
Right. Plus, then, we do have the staff cost.
Yeah. So, depending on how that, and that's an estimate based on what the committee's work was looking at in terms of nine meetings and things like that. So, Tom can talk about the details, but he put together an estimate in terms of what it could cost to staff this committee.
Right.
If they do the full nine meetings. Primary cost that I'm concerned about is city attorney time. I think the cost for both Sylvia's time and Tom's time is, there are projects on their plates that will be diverted because this was not anticipated in terms of their workload. So, like I said, we wanted to give you an estimate in terms of what it could cost in terms of staff time.
So, the special election, though, you're estimating about $5,000. And if there's several other jurisdictions, it may go down, but I understand. I remember having a little training on that with the city recorder.
Yeah. And if you want, you can add additional funds tonight to pay for attorney costs, if you want to do that. The other option is we can wait till the end and see what the total comes up to be and do it at that point.
I think we need to talk about it. I don't want to do it here.
We'll wait. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My concern is, not only are we spending time and funds towards this special committee, there are other things that we're not doing because they're taking up their time with this. So, we, you know, we've got to keep moving forward with the city. We've got to keep running the city, and I just don't know how many hours Tom and Julie can put in to support this, so we've got to be aware of that. Having them run down and stressed out isn't necessarily a good thing for us.
I just have one.
I just have one more question. So, do we know it was just an oversight in not allocating the funds?
So, where's the $540 coming from, then?
It's coming from fund balance. The beginning fund balance for the year, it was 1.1 million, and the ending fund balance projected for the year was 1.7, so it just simply just didn't get allocated as an expense, and so it increased the fund balance for year end.
So, I'm a little confused on this. The $540 is coming from fund balance, correct? Will that have, if it doesn't pass, then where do we get the $540?
We don't. We have a list of projects that won't get done.
What, do we have that list that wouldn't get done?
Yes.
What are they?
Pavement of Wild Rose Place, 12th Street between 99 and Sherwood Boulevard, Upper Roy to Sunset, and then the Slurry Seal Projects.
So, I just want the public to know that this isn't going to go into some project that's one of these other ones, a study or anything like this. This is projects we really have to do for the citizens. It's not an issue of more waste in our budget. This is something that directly goes to the citizens.
Well, I remember budget time. We talked about this several times. It just wasn't allocated accordingly.
Well, what was interesting in the discussion and the process is Craig, over the last couple of years, too, has taught us about trying to improve our, what's the acronym? I hate the acronyms.
KCI?
Yes. And what does that stand for?
Pavement Condition Index.
Index, yes, because we have a number of roads in our community, which is the bread and butter of our responsibility here for our citizens. And that's why we're spending the money, and that, well, that's why we're allocating the money that we already chose to spend.
Right. Yes.
I think that one Glen Eagle Road it's going into, or a couple of them there, those are probably original pavement. They've never had anything done to them, and that subdivision was built in the '60s, if I remember right. So, it's about time. And we go ahead and appropriate it and move on.
I'll move that we pass Resolution 2013-039.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are now moving on to citizen comments. Forty, fifty minutes, not bad. The first one, Nathan Claus. Has everybody filled one of these out that wants to speak tonight?
Nathan Claus, 222-111, Southwest Pacific Highway. Tonight, I come in front of you guys to make a simple plea for fairness within the city. I have a very, you know, example that I witnessed this unfairness within the, you know, city staff towards citizens. On July 11th, I attended a meeting with my father, Charlie Harp, and Jeff Bolton, with city staff members Bob Galati and Scott McKees, and then two other city staffers who didn't really introduce themselves or give business cards. The purpose of this meeting was a pre-construction meeting for our McPhail lots. Now, Mr. Galati told us that we didn't, you know, he didn't send us anything before the meeting so we could pray for it. So, we kind of came in there, you know, not really knowing what they expect, and he also told us that if we tried having an attorney at the meeting, that he would suspend the meeting for a quote indefinite unquote amount of time to go get the city attorney. In the meeting, we spent an hour going through Exhibit A, line for line, verbatim. The only times that Mr. Galati would go off the, reading this document, was to tell us that the requirements in here are required of all people trying to develop, and also if we deviated from them even in the little bit, he'd bring the whole entire might of the police department down on us to stop the production. Now, we had our Exhibit B, which is Bob Galati's Engineering General Construction Practices for the Plan of Operations, and as you can see, has 14 points. The first one being, you know, the hours that you're able to work, which is only Monday through Friday, and Saturday and Sunday, you can only work if you get the city manager via the city engineer's approval. So, under the assumption that, you know, this applied to all people equally, my father, mother, and myself went to all the different construction projects and complained that they were working on the weekends, to which we had Officer Rodriguez, which is Exhibit D. We emailed him, telling him, you know, they shouldn't be allowed to work because, you know, that's not within the construction practices. Well, Officer Rodriguez sent us over the official construction practices that the city follows, and if you notice, there's a big difference. In the ones that Officer Rodriguez sent over, you are allowed to work on Saturday and Sunday and Monday through Friday. So, I was just, I was completely flabbergasted by, you know, this, you know, and, you know, it's one thing to have a difference, but to claim that, you know, all citizens have to deal with it is completely unforgivable, in my opinion. Now, Charlie Harp, who's the contractor, helping us build, made the statement after the meeting that if we have to follow these requirements, it's really nearly impossible to build. So, I'll let you draw your own conclusion off of that statement. Now, I'd like to finish by saying that I work with the Boy Scouts of America, and I was just elected this last year as the chief officer of the eighth largest scouting organization in America currently right now, and I just want to say, if I ever tried doing something with people within my group like that, I'm pretty sure I wouldn't even, you know, have my job for very long. So, I really want to say that, you know, treat everyone fairly. It's not fair to put these restrictions on people just because they disagree with some of the policies that, you know, people are running in this city. So... So, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Could we have city staff look into that to make sure they're the same?
Bill, my name is on that Form 2. I just have a little in relation to that. This is about the McFall subdivision.
Go ahead.
And I just gave the, I gave you guys a map so you could see what I'm talking about. This is a little eight lot property that we've been trying to do for six years now. And in the process, it's about a little over an acre that's actually the lots, and there's almost seven acres that we're dedicating to the city. And as part of that dedication, part of that gifting, whatever you want to call it, they said at the time of the SDC calculations, all of those things would, I mean, obviously, the third page that I have there is the breakout of all the SDCs just on one lot, and it's broken down by category. And so, at the time, and this is a process question, because when you do a subdivision, as small as that one was, the proportionality wasn't there for a one acre, you know, set of lots versus seven acres on gifting. And so, there was supposed to be, there's some categories in there for open space and parks, plus there was a stormwater facility. Anyway, the point is, at the staff level, when the calculations come, that's way down the road. That's not at the time when you have approvals, when you only have 21 days, or whatever it is if you disagree. You have no idea what the staff is going to do at the time, they say, at the time they do, when you present a lot to them, is when they do the individual calculation. So, the sum total of what it is, and this is not the only crazy thing that's happened directly against us, but, so now what it is, is we've dedicated seven acres of property, and there's no credits. The city says there's no credits, there's nothing in there. They were doing the Cedar Creek Trail, they told Metro that this was a property that they needed for the Cedar Creek Trail project in order to get the $5.1 million, and yet it has no value, and there's no credits to us. Even from the inception, that property has been, and then, you know, everybody knows the story of them trying to put the Cedar Creek Trail right through the building envelopes of those lots, and we had to go all the way to Metro to get that taken care of and put so the trail is on the other side of Cedar Creek. So, this property's been under assault for a variety of reasons from the staff. If they wanted the whole property, they should have come up front and said, you know what? We really just don't even want you to put eight little lots in here. We're going to just keep making it as miserable and terrible as we can. And now it's just insult to injury. It's embarrassing. And so, and every step of the way, it's just been this brutal, brutal fighting and confrontation at the staff level, when, and here's where I am on the process. What do you do when you have fundamental disagreements on something like this, where you're having a gifting, a dedication, whatever you want to call it, where part of it is, you have the belief that you're going to get a portion of credit, and you will still be doing gifting, and you find out after all of the land use approvals are gone, you can't do anything about it. Where do you go? We don't have anything in the city. Mr. Gall has said the council should butt out of his business, and he's going to run the city. What do we do on something like that? We don't have a process to take care of this. We had to go all the way to Metro to get the pathway changed on this, and there's $5 million plus that the city is getting from the Cedar Creek Trail project. This is an integral part of the project, and we're still, you know, arguing about it, when we thought we were going to do something nice for the city, and it's turned absolutely horrible. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
Lori Randall?
Lori Randall, 22710 Southwest Orchid Place, Sherwood. An inside job from day one. Walmart tends to be a store that is generally welcomed into town. Yeah. Or it's a store that has incredible, if not impossible, odds to overcome to get into certain urban environments like Sherwood. Presented on its merits, Walmart would have run into community resistance to gain access into Sherwood. Slowly, though, Walmart has gained location and development strategies to not overcome the citizen resistance, but to bypass it. In order to do this, trusted members of the community must be involved, political cover has to be given, and highly sophisticated developers with attorneys need to be in place to manipulate the land use codes behind the scenes in order to grant Walmart entrance without public scrutiny. At first glance, it would not appear that the Sherwood-Langer-Greymore operation was candidate for such a Walmart entry. On careful examination of public documents, including a tax court ruling, however, it becomes clear that Sherwood is a case in point where land use manipulation behind the scenes, encouraged and directed by Mayor Mays, was the perfect environment for Walmart to slip into town without an open and public process. Sophisticated land owners, developers, and the city that lawyered up. The Langers and Barry Kane of Graymore Development are highly sophisticated developers. On controversial projects, they use public relations firms to influence communities. The Langers are the largest developer in Sherwood. They developed the Albertsons and Target Shopping Centers in Sherwood, as well as Home Depot. Langer enlisted the help of other sophisticated, of another sophisticated developer, Brennicky, on the Sherwood-Home Depot zoning manipulation. That zoning manipulation resulted in firing senior staff and a lawsuit where the city council tried unsuccessfully to stop the applicant in Circuit Court. Bill, I'd like to thank you very much for trying to get some transparency in Sherwood government.
Thank you. Terrence Miller? Terrence Miller?
Terrence Miller, 14904 Southwest Langer Lane. A spendthrift city in need of development fees and urban renewal taxes. Because of previous overspending in the past year, Sherwood City Council, led by former Mayor Keith Mays, Dave Grant, and at least two other council members, created a desperate need for money. When Keith Mays lost the election to current Mayor Bill Middleton, citizens found out for the first time that without the Langer Urban Renewal Ground with its development fees and taxes, the city would be in default of its bond obligations. Mayor Middleton can testify to this. The staff, under former city manager Jim Patterson and present city manager Joe Gall, had a significant financial motive to promote the Walmart scheme. Job security bonuses and raises were only possible by forcing Walmart in the urban renewal that is underdeveloped farm ground district. If Walmart were to build on a commercial site within the city boundaries, the city would not have revenue that could be so directly funneled to their salaries and purse accounts. Being in urban renewal zoning gave the city the opportunity to double dip. Had Walmart been zoned in a regular commercial zone and not in urban renewal, the city would have received revenue, but the revenue generated would be shared with schools, the library, the police, and fire department, which does not happen in urban renewal zones. The city employees would not get the direct funds into their purse accounts and salaries as happens with the urban renewal monies. So, it pays more to the city employees to have Walmart build within the urban renewal district. This explains why Mayor Keith Mays pushed to have it develop on the Langer PUD, Public Utility District, which falls within the urban renewal district and not elsewhere. Mayor Mays restrains competition and grants Walmart a green light in urban renewal area. The development would have been difficult to impossible without this political cover and motivation. Ex-Mayor Mays with Paul Elsner of Berry, Elsner, and Hammond told Walmart they could only locate on the Langer Public Utility District. To Mays, he was covering his need for money. Walmart only needed a political green light. Walmart needed a front. Langer and business partners were more than willing. Walmart's coming had to be kept secret. You never see the Walmart footprint on any of the plans. The realtors, et cetera, pretended it was going to be a shopping center. They lied and falsely testified. When asked by several different people at different times, Matt Langer insisted, quote, "It is not going to be a Walmart," end quote. The city failed to notify people living within 1,000 feet of the proposed development.
Thank you. Michael Buffington?
Councilmember Matt Langer has made, or is in a position to make significant profits as a result of changes made to city ordinances, interpretations of zoning definitions, and city council resolutions made specifically for land within the original Langer Farms PUD, officially known as the PUD 91-5, or 95-1. The original PUD of 125 acres to be developed over eight phases was zoned on as open space, high-density residential, retail-commercial, and light-industrial. The land set aside for Phase 7 is zoned as light-industrial. Phase 7 is the land Walmart intends to build on. What follows is a simple timeline of publicly available and documented events. In 1995, the original Langer Farms PUD was submitted and approved. On November 6, 2007, the Langers applied to make minor modifications to the PUD that allowed changes to be made to the uses of each phase, which the city accepted. July 26, 2010, a resolution was made to accept the Langers' desire to use the Phase 7 land, zoned as light-industrial land, as general-commercial land. In that same resolution, the requirement that buildings must be 60,000 square feet or less was explicitly waived. November 2010, Matt Langer ran unopposed for an open position on city council and won the seat. May 2, 2011, Matt Langer submitted an annual verified statement of economic interest form for the year of 2010 stating that the Langer Family LLC was a, quote, "family farm development." That is title of, and he also stated that his title of office was member, and that the business was held by self, which I assume is himself. He listed the Langer Family LLC as a source of income on that same form. He also listed the 56-acre Langer Farms PUD land as property he owned. January of 2011, Matt Langer was appointed as the liaison to the Sherwood Urban Renewal Planning Advisory Committee. September 30, 2011, land use economics consultancy firm Johnson Reed published a study that identified 90 Portland-area industrial properties as primary development sites. The study has been used by local Portland-area governments and agencies as a way of identifying properties with the highest potential of benefiting from urban renewal funding. In the study, after removing properties owned by the Port of Portland or by utilities, railroads, or local government, the list was narrowed down to 41 sites. Of those 41 sites, the land within the lowest, with the lowest real market value, was the 56-acre site that includes the land set aside for Phases 6, 7, and 8 of the Langer Farms PUD. Of the 90 candidate sites, the Langer property was the only site that hadn't been used for actual industrial purposes before. It was also the only site that was a functional farm at the time of the study. While the Johnson Reed study was primarily focused on formerly-functional but now decaying industrial sites, it considered the Langer parcel to be vacant industrial land because of the zoning applied to the land in 1995, and because of its lack of actual light industrial activity over the prior 16 years. When considered a vacant industrial lot, the real market value for the Langer Farms site in 2011, according to the study, was three cents per square foot. Sometime after the study was released, the land for Phase 7 was designated as urban renewal land, making projects on that land eligible for a portion of the $45 million in available urban renewal funding. Today, it's estimated that once, that once-functional farmland, land owned by councilmember Matt Langer and his family, land that was categorized as underdeveloped light-industrial land worth three cents per square foot ripe for urban renewal funding, is actually worth more, anywhere from $3 to $10 per square foot, when it's categorized as general-commercial land.
Amanda Rowe?
Hi. Amanda Rowe, 17938 Southwest Fitch Drive. Matthew Langer ignores the rules of potential or actual conflicts of interest where and when necessary. Not once was there a statement of potential conflict or actual conflict of interest unless Matt Langer's family was directly receiving funds. Any number of times, Matt Langer has been involved in marginal votes and has not called out a potential or actual conflict of interest. For example, the sign code. The Langers are the landowners at Sherwood Plaza. Repeatedly, this code benefited Langer's property, and specifically with the Sherwood Plaza sign, singled out for extraordinary generous signs. Langer never once gave vote that he had a potential or actual conflict of interest. Additionally, the Langers acknowledged in their IRS probate hearing in 2007 that this type of frontage that the signs afforded on 99 West is worth $5 a square foot for rent retail property. But even though Matt Langer knows about the value of the property sign, he ignores it when voting. The fact is known by the state, this fact is known by the State Ethics Committee. The problem here is that there are instances where Matt Langer recuses himself. When the city obtained property through eminent domain, which was a more overtly beneficial act for the developer, but in many instances where it is less obvious, he did not recuse himself, which as the code, which as with the code and the ordinance changes. There are instances where he acted ethical and recused himself. For example, when the development fees were not increased. In a conversation in the hall between two citizens, when they asked why he recused himself, on this he said, quote, "I couldn't vote on this because it benefited my family," end quote. But the issue is, is that any number of times, Matt Langer has been involved in marginal votes and has not called out as a potential or actual conflict of interest. If we refer to the Penn Landing in Baltimore, the FBI came in with a major indictment for the city's attempt to gain repayment for zoning changes from Roos. In comparison, Langer saw no issue with manipulating the code that controlled the PUD when it benefited his family, to the tune of millions of dollars. If Langer did this, which in all probability, it looks to purport to Walmart's letter of intent, this is one of the most serious acts our community can imagine. Only through land use manipulation could he have obtained the right zoning and land use regulations to allow Walmart to build on this site, by bringing back the 1995 PUD codes back into existence, which is a flat contradiction, which was told to the IRS. There are points and conceptual matters here that go far beyond the manipulation of land use regulation to line Langer at all's pocket. Some of this is a conspiracy to extreme trade. It certainly makes the zoning laws in Oregon impotent. Thank you.
Thank you. Naomi Bella?
Hello, my name is Naomi Bella, 22741 Southwest Lincoln Street. I would just like to read a few of the letters. We've been collecting a few more since last time. And I'll just read a few of the comments. One says, this is Justin Hendren. He says, "I've worked with Walmart in the past and have experienced their bullying tactics firsthand. I also have seen what Walmarts have done to small communities over time as I grew up in one. There is absolutely no benefit to Sherwood residents by allowing a Walmart to be built here." The next one is Marvin Mandrell. He says, "Healthcare for employees." This matters to him personally because he wants healthcare for employees, and he wants more non-big-box stores in Sherwood. The next one says, "I believe Walmart and its business practices do not fit Sherwood." That was Lori Kaler. The next one says, "I built my home in Sherwood due to its small-town feel. Over the last 13 years, the city seems to be confused as to what it wants to be. Big or charming, having worked as a retail manager, I could give you many real-life examples of what a Walmart supercenter really looks like for our town. I would very much like to speak to you about this. Please contact me when you have a moment." That's Merlinda Umeier. Jeffrey Garcia says, "I live here and I care." And Joseph Delgrelle says, "Fair wages and insurance are what matter to him." And Joseph Delgrelle says, "Fair wages and insurance are what matter to him." The next one says, "I would like my community to contribute to helping and hard-working employees by providing fair wages, health care, et cetera." Cindy Fasano says, "I live in Sherwood. I would like for our businesses to have high enough standards to serve our local community members, if we must have a Walmart." Katie Larkin says, "I like having Sherwood as a small town with locally-owned businesses that I want..." With locally-owned businesses, not all big-box stores. Galtoin says, "Low wages and no health insurance are a blight on our community. I cannot accept a business that promotes such practices. Their business model is only good for Walmart and is destructive to our community. Please help us fight this destructive force." Jeffrey writes, it will do, Jeffrey Freshwell writes, "It will do an injustice to the local And this is one I've read a lot. Eric Topf says, "I don't want to increase traffic." Ashley Cothran writes, "Walmart lowers property values." Andrew Cothran writes, "They put small businesses out of business." And Marie Cothran writes, "They treat their employees terribly, no benefits, et cetera." And Kelsey Cothran writes, "Walmart sells guns. We don't need that type of business in Sherwood." Tracy Chin writes, "I do not agree with Walmart's treatment of employees and do not want a 24-hour superstore because of the drastic impact it will have on our culture." Michelle Palmer writes, "I don't believe it would be in the best interests of our community." And Jane Mandel writes, "I don't personally agree with Walmart's values or the big-box store in Sherwood. Bring Whole Foods or Trader Joe's instead, or New Seasons." Eric Jones writes, "I don't think Walmart is a good representation of Sherwood's values." And Brad and Lexi Hendricks write, "The impact of such a large business and the negative impact on our traffic and overall feel of Sherwood. We moved to Sherwood because we thought it was a city focused on, on families."
Thank you, Naomi. Nancy Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The IRS tax ruling, the entire...
Name, address.
Oh, Nancy Taylor, Sherwood, Oregon, 97140. The entire PUD was not possible in one forum at the tax court when the Langers wished to save tax payments. But in another forum, it was an existing, that was in existence in 1995. They told the IRS one story that the PUD did not exist, that it was just light industrial ground, and thus saving somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 million in property taxes. What the Langers told the tax court judge was that this was light industrial property and that it did not have this potential of a PUD and that it had a variety of uses, including industrial and commercial. These poor old farmers just couldn't do anything. After working with Mayor Mays, it was conservatively worth 20 million more than they told anybody. They got the ordinances changed, and that was all luck? Or was it to avoid paying taxes? Anyway, I'm not going to read on because we all know how it all ends. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a quick presentation to you.
Oh, thank you.
Put it on.
No, that's for later. Thank you.
I didn't forget you either.
I know, you got it this time. Lori Stevens, 15630 Farmer Way, Sherwood. First, I'd like to appreciate that you moved the citizen comments up a little bit. That's just fabulous. Thank you. I just wanted to ask about the "why" issue that came up on June 18. I wanted to make sure that the letter did go out on the 19th as Assistant City Manager Anybody? Okay.
It didn't go out on the 19th, but I think it went out a couple days later.
Okay.
So I did get it out to them shortly.
And it did include a deadline?
It made a request to have, to have information returned within 30 days.
Okay, and it did include a request for the list of members?
Where?
This is, okay, I am commenting. I'm just, I, this was the only forum in which we could do this. It was not referenced anywhere on the website, and I wanted to be sure this was all taken care of.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe we're having a meeting on the "why." So we should have all your, hopefully have all the questions answered. I believe it's the next meeting we're having.
Will that be open to the public?
It's a work session.
Okay, and that'll be on the website, I assume, with a little bit more notice than two days?
Yes.
That would be fabulous. Then I will leave my 250 for somebody else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Butterfield?
Hi. I'm Tracy Butterfield. What? Oh, I'm sorry. Tracy Butterfield, 23614 Southwest Heron Lakes Drive. Believe it or not, I'm not here to tell Matt Langer what a terrible person he is. I am here because I would like to say some positive comments. I've lived in this city for over 20 years. We were the, originally the fourth house built in Whispering Fur, so I've literally been here and seen this small town grow, lived through the growing pains of not enough field space for our kids to play different sports, not enough, not good, good enough facilities to have plays or musicals or provide the arts, anything. And I'm proud of our city. I feel like we've come a long way, and granted, there's still a long way to go. But when my husband became a council member, I remember him telling me that he took it upon himself to go and try to visit every staff member to see what they do and what their job is and how they feel about it and everything. He just came home with so many positive comments about each and every person in the city staff and how hard they work, and sometimes for free, because, you know, there's not enough hours in the day to do what they need, so they will do stuff on their own. So I wanted to give a shout-out to the city staff as well as the city council because I feel like this whole Walmart thing happening, no matter what side of the fence you're on with it, I feel like a city needs to come together the best that they can to make the best out of the situation, and positivity is really the only way that I, I know. I feel like I know at least three members up here personally and very well, and feel like I can vouch for their strong character and moral value. And my husband knows the city staff, and I trust his judgment, and he vouches for them as well. So I wanted to thank you for your service. I've watched my husband give service to this city in many different ways. Lots of free nights that he's spent fixing things in schools or fields or whatever, and I believe he has a good heart, that he wants to better the city. I've seen that over the last 20 years. I believe in the right to let your voice be heard, and I understand the frustration that people are having, not wanting to have a big-box store in their town, but it's coming, you know? So I'm trying to make my peace with it. The only thing I don't like is I don't think it's fair to be personally attacked. My husband has received phone calls that, quite frankly, are just unsettling and not right. The only thing I don't like about this city is the Claus Reader Board that sits on 1299. People talk about Matt Langer having a responsibility to the city, and I believe that Mr. Claus has a responsibility to the city as well. And he's, you know, rude, and I think, like, he's rude right now. But I think that, yeah, it might be...
Please, please, come on, just let her speak.
Sorry. I would like to have my time to speak as well.
Thank you.
Anyway, I think there's some responsibility there that, you know, you guys put yourself out there and open for criticism, and he's done the same thing. So I don't know if the sign's legal or not, but that's the one thing that we, I hear with friends around the city and around the area, that it's unbecoming. And, but, and that, I just really wanted to end on a positive note. I really do feel the city's going in a great direction, and I appreciate your hard work and, and all that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Merda Meyer?
Thanks, Tracy.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton, City Council. I actually just have a question. Oh, pardon me. I am Mayor Tom Meyer. My address, 24002 Southwest Middleton. I actually just have a question about the budget. I'm wondering if on an annual basis, there is a line-by-line reconciliation for citizen review available? And if it's not available, is that something that could potentially become available? So that questions similar to what has come up tonight are, can be answered in advance? And that's all I have to say.
Jennifer Kupel?
Kyper.
Kyper, sorry. Well, that's normal.
That's okay. I've been called worse. Early and often.
Okay, so, are we having fun yet? I actually did not, oh, my Jennifer Kyper. I'm 17075 Southwest Cobblestone Drive in Sherwood, and happily so, by the way. I actually did not come here expecting to say anything, actually, but I have often thought about coming and saying a few words, and the conversation and the discussions going on tonight has propelled me to just say a few things. The first thing I, I want to say is I absolutely appreciate all the members of council. I absolutely do. I know many of you personally. I've worked with you on many different things, from extracurricular activities to real work on the Parks and Recreation Board, the YMCA Board. I also want to thank the city staff, Tom and Joe Gall. I've talked with on the phone. They've been very forthcoming with information and absolutely helpful. One of the things that I would like to just say to everyone here in the room, and it really speaks to what I believe it was Naomi who'd brought some letters, and one letter in particular struck me, and it was, I think, written by a man named Jeff, as, sitting there listening to these letters being read, and he said, "I love this town." Well, if you love this town, I think it would behoove most people to really understand a little bit of civics. In listening to a lot of people talk, it sounds like there are people that are well-versed in certain pieces of things, but certainly, understanding how regulations, how resolutions get made, what does it mean to have zoning, what's the difference between vacant industrial land and undeveloped industrial land can be very different. When you have an attorney on two sides of a discussion, or on one side of the discussion, and you don't have another attorney, that's just standard operating procedures for, to have two attorneys from each side there at the meeting, that's just standard. There's nothing underhanded about that. And so for me, personally, I am not well-versed in physics, but I would ask that city council consider a resolution to actually come up with a plan to open up lessons on civics to our community. There are a lot of passionate people here, and I think if everyone understood, you know, there's a lot of discussion based on presupposition and assumption. It's getting muddled with the facts, and I think that it would be a great idea. I'm definitely not one to shy away from controversy. I actually happen to like Claus's sign because it leads to discussion, whether you honor one side or the other, and I think conflict leads to resolution. But I do think that most of the citizens of Sherwood really need to have a good foundation and have that offered to them so they can understand civics and everybody can be working from the same, you know, from the same, same page. I also want to give a shout-out to the council for, in considering including the YMCA Board in your discussions at a meeting. I, I understand it was news to me tonight that there will be some kind of discussion next week, so that would be, I'm going to thank you in advance for including the YMCA Board in that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It won't be, it'll be two weeks, it's in two weeks. Angela Rizzo?
My name is Angela Rizzo, 23914 Southwest Aspen Lakes Drive. I'm not going to be speaking on Walmart. Actually, I'm here to talk about the "why." I wasn't able to make the last meeting, but I watched the video several times, and I read the minutes, and I'm very proud of the council for stepping up and looking into the "why" and how they've treated the kids and the parents. And I'm speaking directly to our young swim athletes. And I get very emotional. The YMCA almost destroyed my daughter. She almost quit swimming. I was able to pull her out, get her to TTSC. They have her back swimming. She's competing. She just returned from a week-long Nike Swim Camp. She's swimming 200s, and she's 10. The YMCA destroyed that swim program. They did not keep their promises to keep that program running at the level that it was running when they took it upon themselves to kick out the SSA. I had only been in this community and with that program a few months. I stuck it out with them because they promised, and all that happened was pushing the parents away, pushing the community away. It all had to do with money. All they wanted was the money. And I want to read something, and I'm not going to say the young lady's name, but this relates to my daughter and a lot of the kids. This was from our year-end award ceremony. This young lady was from the Yoama Dragons, and her parents took her to TTSC, thank goodness. But like my daughter, she states, "It was really hard a year ago for me to move here from Yoama. Swimming was my life, and my old coach got fired, so I moved to TTSC, farther away from home. I wasn't very happy about it and didn't really participate. Over the first couple of months, I struggled to grow up. I almost quit because I felt like no one respected me and I wasn't improving. In the end, I realized I didn't even respect myself. I was holding myself back, struggling to be a part of the team. I started to go to practice, meets, team dinners, team movies, and actually became a part of TTSC. Now, thinking back on it, I can't even picture a life without this team. I'm glad I didn't give up on swimming. I will be forever grateful for this team who welcomed me with open arms. Thank you, Janine, and my Green Elite Group, and everyone else for letting me be a part of this family." And I have to say, the coaches at that organization overloaded their groups to accept our kids, who are still going over there. They are bringing on new coaches, and they are treating the kids and the parents with respect, which you would expect from the YMCA, and that does not happen, and I'm ashamed of them. And I wholeheartedly respect and agree that this community needs to look like, look at a different avenue in 2018 because the YMCA does not fit with us. Thank you.
Thank you. John Lee?
How do I work this?
The button has to come up. There you go.
Is it on? Is it on? Yes, it is. Tracy Butterfield stole my thunder, but I have notes because I'm a little nervous up here in front of you guys.
Hey, John, can you give your name and address, please?
Thank you. John Lee, 28801 Southwest Lad Hill Road. I've lived here for over 20 years and first visited... years, and first visited Sherwood in 1985, when I met my wife of 24 years. My son is 20, and will be starting his senior year in college this year. I am here this evening to infuse some positives that I see in all of you and this city we live in. Counselor Grant, I don't have anything good to say about him because I don't know him. But I wanted to thank him for his service. Counselor Langer, I have the privilege of serving with you on the YMCA Board of Managers, and our conversations have always been enjoyable. I find you to be a good Christian man. Thank you for your service. Um, I had something nice to say about Counselor Clark, and since she's not here, I will just go on record as thanking her for her service. Uh, Counselor Henderson, same thing as well, as Counselor Grant. I don't know her very well, but we had a nice conversation at the annual chamber dinner, so that was nice. And thank you for your service, or Counselor Henderson. Um, Counselor Folsom, you have an amazing daughter. Uh, I'm sure you have an amazing family, but I only know one of your daughters. I credit my son coming out of his shell to the friendship he shared with her. He is thriving at college because of it. Thank you for your service. Counselor Butterfield, the last time I saw you, you were wearing a duck shirt. So any council member that has enough guts to wear a duck shirt to a city council meeting has my respect. I do have a question for you, though. Do you, do you think that ducks can overcome the massive NCAA sanctions levied on them?
They've already done it.
Okay. Thank, thank you for your service. Mayor Middleton, um, you served in Iraq, Afghanistan, and South Korea. I was pleasantly hit, um, I was pleased to hear. And I would like to tell you how much I appreciate your service to our military. I will repeat what I said to you yesterday, that without the help of the US military, I would have grown up in what is now North Korea, and our family would never have had the opportunities we got in the United States. Um, I have a comment regarding Joe Gall, and since I cannot direct it to him, can you pass on a message for me? Since Joe is being accountable for things that some consider to be wrong with our city, I think it would only be fair that he be held accountable for things that are great in our city. When I drive, walk, jog around town, I rarely forget to look around. What I notice are clean streets, groomed parks and trees, children playing in neighborhoods, people walking their, or jogging their dogs, and there are a lot of dogs in Sherwood. In my everyday conversations with Sherwood residents, an overwhelming majority of them think that this city is the greatest place to live. And it's because of the care and work of Joe Gall, his staff, and the city council. And I can thank you in person, but since I cannot direct my comments to Joe and his staff, I would like you to thank him and the staff for me. I would like to end by inviting all of you to participate in the YMCA's sixth annual family triathlon on August 17th. If you cannot participate, then please join us at the barbecue right afterwards and enjoy some free food and drink. I look forward to seeing some or all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Brous?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Renee Brous, 22794 Southwest Highland Drive, Sherwood. I, too, following John, would just like to take a moment to share a little appreciation and some positiveness in this chamber, and thank the city staff for all that they're doing for, for the city, and you all as well, serving and giving you, giving up your time and talents. Personally, each opportunity that I've had to work with the city staff, they've been professional and timely, and with the information that I've requested, whether it be personal or whether it be professional. And over the last several months of tension and drama, the staff have responded positively and professionally. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." I have watched our city manager, Joe Gall, continue to lead by example and with integrity, and how he inspires his team to greatness weekly with his updates. He attempts to find the positive in the negative. He has a great staff, and I appreciate all of you. The police department, even with their small force, is doing great things for this community. I believe this is due to the leadership of Chief Growth, Captain Hanlon, and Captain Daniel. All are great leaders who lead and manage. The police are at the community events, keeping the peace, but also building relationships and building community. We are blessed to have the great group keeping our city safe. There is much conflict and a lot of tearing down people in this community. I ask that you each find ways to build each other up. This community is too good of a community to continue in the current direction. I will leave you with a thought by Marie Dressier. Never one thing and seldom one person can make for a success. It takes a number of them merging into one perfect whole. And in response to Ms. Stevens, yes, the papers were sent to us, and we did respond. You have all the papers at the city manager's office. Thank you.
Sunny.
My name is Sunny Yepes. I live at 21655 Cedar Brook Way. Um, my, I, you know, actually my goal was not to talk tonight, but I am not capable of that. So, here I am. Um, I made it a long ways. So, the first thing that I would like to say is that, um, I have, uh, lived or worked in this community since 1998, and I've enjoyed about 99% of it. Then 1% is a huge challenge. And, um, I've been told on several occasions that I do live up to my name. Um, but it breaks my heart to see people behave the way they're behaving. I have had many challenges in my life. Um, I, too, worked for the Y for a very long time. It wasn't all YMCA, and what those initials stand for. Um, it was a very tough separation for me. Um, you know, there's a lot of things in life that don't go your way. Guess what? Life's not fair. Just isn't. Um, one thing, I attended the Chamber Business Forum, um, last Tuesday, and the table group that I sat at discussed, um, an article that was in the Oregonian, um, that was pertaining to the Walmart issue. And it was the second most commented article in the Oregonian ever. Is anyone embarrassed about that? Because I am. This community is amazing. Is that what we want to be known for? Really? Really? We have amazing staff. We have amazing volunteers. We are amazing parents. We, think of all the ways that we've served in this community and how passionate we are. I, um, one thing that really puzzles me is I participate in the cash mob as much as I possibly can, and a lot of the people who seem really upset and really passionate about shopping local, I never see at cash mob. I totally don't understand it, because cash mob's not a business. It's nonprofit. It's supporting local and spending cash in this town that we all love. Why don't these people who are so fired up spend their cash in small businesses in Sherwood, like Mud Puddles? Because guess what? The cool toy, ooh, that was close. The cool toys that they have at Mud Puddles, they're not going to have at, at whatever. The Mexican store, that, you know, they may have it at Walmart, but you're really going to have to look for a while. I don't know if you need that much exercise, whatever. You know, there's a raised symposia, you know, not, there isn't a business you can find that didn't start small. Good luck with that. I mean, Starbucks didn't open day one with, you know, a stand in every country. Just doesn't work that way. Um, I have 55 seconds. Okay. Um, you know, I, I would like to, I feel so proud to be a part of this community, that you can't walk down the street without seeing somebody like, "Oh, I remember when Middleton was on the Y Board when I was 23." That was a really long time ago, for me, at least. It was only a week ago for you. Um, you know, I go to Chamber Mixer. Matt shows up. "What a good guy." Like, that, there was only 15 people there. He's there. He's supporting local. He supports business. Robin, "I'm waiting for my daughter to be in third grade. We've been waiting for a long time," but I, she's got, I got dreams. Sports in Sherwood, I mean, it's unstoppable. Oh, dang it. I like sports and fitness.
Thank you.
Uh, sports and art. That's why I worked at the Y. Yay!
Jennifer Harris?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Harris, 2144 Southwest Rollick Avenue. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking either, but here I am again. So, a couple of things I wanted to say. First of all, I have been to almost every cash mob, and the three that I know that I didn't go to, I went later in the day, because we also run a small business, and Saturdays are our busiest days. So, we can't always follow the cash mob time, but we always get to that business sometime in that day. Um, so just because they're not there from 11 to 3, doesn't mean we don't show up and throw them 20 bucks. Um, I also want to say that the No Walmart group, or the Recall group, or whatever you want to call the several different groups that are out there, um, are not the only ones, uh, excuse me, you guys aren't the only ones, council, Mr. Langer, getting bullied. I have been told to leave. I have been told to watch my children. Um, I have had threats. I have had people drive by my house at 2 miles an hour, just stare at me. Um, other people on this, in my circle of friends, have had similar situations. Um, hooting and hollering when they drive by somewhere and they're recognized. So, I don't condone any of the bullying. I haven't spoken up because I think that's when it becomes personal, and it's not personal for me. None of this is personal for me. Um, as far as the recall goes, because most people know that I'm part of that, um, it's not personal, and I just want people to know that it's not one-sided. The bullying is not one-sided. Um, I have been told that my $3,742 a year in tax, uh, property taxes doesn't count, because I haven't lived here my whole life. I've been told that my nine years here in Sherwood doesn't count, even though I've lived within 10 miles of Sherwood for 40 years. Um, I've told that my, um, service in our school PAC doesn't count, because I've only been in the school for two years and on the PAC for two years. I've been told that present, being president of my HOA, doesn't count, that I'm not a true Sherwood citizen, because I didn't fight against Target, or I didn't fight against Home Depot. Yes, I wasn't here when those came in. I didn't have a choice. They were here when I got here. But even if I was here, I don't think it discounts how I feel and what's going on today. Um, I'd also wanted to say that, on a side note, um, the $5,000 for the special committee, or $10,000, uh, it's a lot of money. Um, in a $40 million budget, though, it's not much. And I think that if you guys are concerned about the money, you can always take the job back. And so, if that's something you wanted to consider, I think you should do it pretty quick, because I know some of us are, going to three meetings a week is killing our families. But we're willing to do it. But I just wanted to throw that out there when I heard that on the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jean? Do you have a new subject to talk on, Jean?
Yep.
Okay.
Eugene Stewart, PO Box 534, Sherwood. Um, I got an article from Oregon Representative Richardson, uh, where he made the comment that the state of Oregon is 13 billion, that's with a B, Pers is in the hole. And so, what my question is, how does that relate to the city of Sherwood? You know, what is ours? Uh, if you took 1/10th of a percent, it could be 13 million. A 1/100th of a percent, 1 million, you know, what is the amount? And if Richardson knows for the state of Oregon what their amount is, why is that not being discussed at the city council level? Why, I mean, Pers has to know what your unfunded liability is. Um, you're not, cities at this point are not required to put that on their balance sheet. It's hard for me to understand how staff and council can make financial decisions if this number is a large number and not a small number. Um, so, if Pers does give that number to staff, it would be nice to know what it is. I know they say that, you know, it goes up 5% each year. Well, we can't afford to keep going on. We lose teachers. We lose staff down at this level. Uh, it's a problem that nobody wants to face, and somehow, the people from the grassroots are going to have to take hold of it and figure out what to do. Uh, in Georgia, there's a small town back there, about the same size as Sherwood, went bankrupt. Their employees, government employees, are no longer receiving anything. So, you know, this is a very dangerous thing that we keep ignoring. Uh, how critical it is, is when your Democratic governor of Oregon puts a proposal forward to try to start paying it down, and then his fellow colleagues vote it down. So, I think, as councilmen, councilors, you need to take, get a handle on that and see what it is before you make some of these financial decisions, because are we in deep doo-doo or not? Nobody knows, or nobody will say. Uh, it's just like I've noticed, you don't normally get financial statements, so you know how to make a decision. If you don't know how much you owe, or how much you're spending, uh, when you make these decisions, you may make them out of the goodness of your heart, but you need to know what the financial conditions are of this city so that it can continue on in a good order. Um, I've lived here most of my life, since about 46, and seen quite a few changes. We've all gone through these same growing pains and just, we keep repeating the same mistakes all the time. We've become a bedroom community, and then we say, "Well, we, we need to bring businesses in so we can pay for our schools and, uh, help support our roads and everything else." And then all of a sudden, a housing boom comes along, and we forget those lessons. And we keep going on, and we keep forgetting. I remember sitting down with Joe when he first came on. He talked about envisioning. Well, I think as part of this visioning, somebody at staff or in the council needs to take the leadership to get the people together instead of banging heads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council announcements.
Bill?
I had one for you, and I called you up.
You had it for the budget.
All right, four more minutes. That's the last one. Come on, Jim. I didn't see the second one.
Robert James Claus, 22211 South Pacific Highway. I, um, enjoyed the comment enormously. What I don't like is that it's fairly clear, because it's now progressed where we're getting papers prepared to take it to the next forum. What Susie was talking to you about when we built the Toiletton National Wildlife Refuge in Sherwood, it followed an environmental effort we had done in California. RJ Wagner, and most of all, the Honorable Mark Hatfield, helped us build that refuge. Now, we donated the Robin Hood Theater, your trail lands so you could build the Stella Olson Park, and we donated 70 acres to that refuge. I promised Mark Hatfield that we would see to it that that nine acres that finishes that walkway went to the public. Now, I know people don't like my sign, but that doesn't bother me much. Never has. I think Nathan Bedford Ford said it both, "My inferiors can't insult me, and my superiors won't." We donated that ground at what is about a million-dollar expense to my family. Now, I don't think any of you have even come close to those kind of donations. Not even close. And you never will. But do you know, in order to get the final steps done... But do you know, in order to get the final steps done on that donation, we had to go to Governor Roberts because Hatfield passed away. We were six years trying to make that donation around your staff's attempt to stop us. Now, it's going to be really documented for you and some of you'll get a nice lesson where you can sit and answer questions until you understand what occurred. But it's Mark Hatfield and it's Barbara Roberts and it's some really outstanding people, RJ Wagner, Gibson Dunn and Crutcher, that stepped forward to give you that system. None of you up there had a damn thing to do with any of it. In fact, some of you fought it. Now you say, "What's my point?" If you're going to complain about my sign, talk about our good works. If you're going to complain about the fact that I believe in free speech, complain about my good works. And if you can't match either, don't ever come up and lie about me with state statements as I brought Walmart to this town. In fact, Walmart was trespassing when I found out they were here, but that will come out in the proper forum. No, all I'm telling you is you brought this on yourself. You've absolutely brought this on yourself and you won't listen. Life's a cybernetic model. You have input, you have output, you have feedback. You break that loop and it's only a matter of time. People are going to get angry. Because some people are just lucky, some get brought into the right educational environment. Most of us, like my sainted mother, struggle all her life. But she made opportunities for other people that far exceed anything I think I could do. But I am sick and tired of having to walk over your staff and not have any place to complain. Look at this psychological profile which I'm going to put in Mr. Gahl. The moment we went to Gahl and complained about not being able to compete a million dollar gift, he turned Gallotti loose on us and Gallotti did everything he could to drive the contractors out of there. And you know the nice part about it is, you say anything and it gets worse. Why don't you appoint some kind of mediation arbitration board, put a law professor, Lee Weisvogel and a council attorney on that and you wouldn't have your citizen coming here as damn angry as they are.
Thank you, Jim. Council announcements.
I just wanted to, for the past two and a half months, as we rehearsed The Little Mermaid for the encore performances this weekend, and they even, they're under construction and they even, sorry, they even stowed, allowed us to stow our costumes in their makeshift office and I just can't thank them enough. I don't think they quite expected how many costumes there would be, especially with the mourning that they had there. It was quite exciting as they had some physical facility issues, but they have always walked in with us with a smile. And I have to share one quick anecdote. They, one senior was going in and shutting off lights and she came out of the bathroom as our kids were changing and said, "Oh my gosh, I just saw a mermaid." And it was so cute. But then she said, if you, this is the magic word, and my board and production team was so thrilled to hear this, she goes, "If you ever need help sewing costumes, there's a whole bunch of us that would like to do that." So I have to thank Teresa Cawkins. She is just a very fine senior center director. She brings joy to all the seniors, but she really works hard to open the doors and make all the generations feel welcome there and they do. And it's, she's just wonderful. I appreciate tonight, many of the citizen comments. I've appreciated the joy and the love that you have for Sherwood, the passion that you bring. I have actually done the YMCA triathlon a couple of times with my children and I have to qualify that. It's a very small triathlon, so I'm able to do it. But this year, I unfortunately, my daughter, which Mr. Lee does not know, is doing a white coat ceremony for medical school the day before in Utah, and so I will not be there. But I wanted to thank you for the invitation. I have loved the YMCA triathlon in the past and I still have my medal. I am very excited about the Robin Hood Festival this weekend. It is the 60th festival. This is an event that is put on by citizens volunteering and Susan was here earlier and she left, but I have to tell you, that was the thing when we came to town, that we said we're never leaving. It is magic. And even though the fryman's chicken is cooked by somebody else, it's fabulous. Make sure you get there. Friday night, I think there's a knighting ceremony around 6 o'clock and there's a big parade on Saturday at 10 o'clock. And then there will be all kinds of activities, the family stage, the main stage, the rear garden. This year, the Royal Academy, which is presented by the Voices for the Performing Arts and partnered with the City of Sherwood and the Cultural Arts Commission, will be hosting the Little Mermaid encore performances in the Canary Plaza. And we will also have craft, crustacean crafts, porpoise painting and some other cute little activities, once again, brought to you by an army of volunteers in Sherwood. So I am just so grateful tonight because I was saying this to a good friend today, Sherwood is what it is because it's on the backs of the volunteers of generations. I asked Odd Gribble one time, I'm like, "How did it happen that people just, that you have 500 volunteers for a school of 500? How does that happen?" And she said, "That's just what we do here in Sherwood." And Alice Thornton and all of Selma and all of the other wonderful examples. So I appreciate it all very, very much. I'd like to ask that maybe after we make our announcements for our boards and commissions, that could we talk about the financial end of the special committee? Because are there some economies that we can find in that? Do we have to have an attorney at every meeting? Could they give information and they take a list? Is there some way to make that efficiencies? Because the number that I saw yesterday was $57,000 for the, for the meeting, for the run of the meetings. And I know it was staff time, that staff's not directed, but is that something that we can discuss? Would you rather wait until all the councilors are present? But I'm concerned. I know the mayor ran.
I'd rather wait.
Okay, he ran on this fiscal conservative policy, so I know it must be very important to you as well. So if we can have that conversation, I guess at our next meeting on August?
6th.
Okay. But, but can we encourage staff to be as economical as possible?
I agree with you on that, but this is a citizen issue and I think we could actually look at cuts in other areas that we're kind of throwing money at. I mean, to me, this is a critically important voice of the community. We may not agree with it. We may not even vote through those resolutions to go, but to me, $81,000, that's worth a lot more than some other money that I feel we're just throwing out there on other projects. That's just me. So we should probably have a discussion on that at the next.
Well, I think by, frankly, by the next meeting, it's watering the bridge, right? So if, you know, I think if, we need to have this discussion with all of council.
I think all council needs to hear.
Because I really do believe that everybody is passionate about allowing the citizens to have the opportunity to work through the process as they are. But as always, we always encourage staff, be economical and, gosh, three meetings a week. Congratulations to our citizens committee that they're willing and able to do that. I have a wedding in 10 days, so I wish I could come, but frankly, I'm a little underwater.
Mr. Mayor, can I mention a couple of things related to that? I think by August 6th, the committee probably will hopefully be wrapping up. There are costs to this, but as someone said earlier, there's a $40 million budget in the city and this is very important. And everything I've heard from Tom and Sylvia and people that have participated is that the committee is really working hard and working well together. They need guidance, especially in the legal area, because the last thing you want to do is have a citizen committee go off and create something or suggest something that's illegal or unconstitutional. That would be worse. So I think having the city attorney there to help them do their job, it's going to cost us. And my point in sharing the cost with you is just to be transparent and let you know, hey, there's going to be costs. But we will either find savings in other places or do other things. It's the beginning of the fiscal year, so we've got the resources to do this. So I appreciate the concerns, but I think it's just the cost of doing a good job and helping these citizens craft something that you can consider putting on the ballot next month. So that's my opinion.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate that perspective.
So I wrote a little statement here in response to some of the testimony I heard tonight during the citizen comment. And so I didn't hear anything new tonight from that testimony presented by Lori Randall, Terrence Miller, Michael Buffington or Amanda Rowe that hasn't been presented in the past by others present in the room tonight. There have been three ethics complaints filed against me in the last 30 months, so that's one every 10 months, and all of them have come back clear. Some others sitting in this room have been threatening to sic the FBI and my family for over a decade. And so I recommend those of you who newly got involved in all this to avoid those who only spout outlandish tall tales and ask yourself, if any of the, if any of that stuff that you heard tonight was true, don't you think the FBI or other agencies would already have set up camp in Sherwood and be in this meeting right now? So just keep that in mind. Ask yourself, put, run it through that filter real quick. Keep in mind also that this stuff started back in 95 and a lot of the zoning that you're upset about was presented by the same person who's presenting you with all these outlandish tall tales. So thanks to that individual, that's how a lot of this actually got there. And then the 2007 decision, that happened three years before I was ever on council. So all this, all this hoopla about my role on council, all occurred way before I had anything to do with city council. So just be careful about the outlandish lies and tall tales that you are hearing because you're just newly involved in a lot of what's going on in Sherwood. So I love this community. I'm not going anywhere. My family's not going anywhere. We've been here for six generations now and we plan on being here longer. I probably won't be the last langer sitting up here. You can probably plan on that. We've been here since 1879 and we will take care of this community as best we can. And we will defend it, we will defend it from those who will try to break it down as much as possible, including the guy there chuckling, because that's probably the biggest problem in our whole town. So I'll hope.
Let's keep this civil so we can.
And so that right, I don't need to say anything else. That ends it very well right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have nothing. City manager comment?
The circus show continues.
Okay. I don't have anything. I did want Craig Sheldon to come up briefly, our public works director, because the Snyder Park soccer field, soccer field is almost complete and I wanted him to give an update to the council and to the community.
So just an update, we're planning on doing the GMAX testing tomorrow. The field's complete. We had no problems with the base. So once the GMAX is done, probably by Friday, if it comes back, we'll be able to play on it. It'll open up. They had till the 19th, so the 19th is Friday. So that was the plan. It was done in about a month and everything went according to plan, under budget and on time.
Congratulations. That's great news.
Craig, I went up and took a look at it. You guys did a great job once again. I'm probably be associated with the staff of Sherwood. I'm proud to be on council and you guys have just really kicked butt and done a great job up there. So pat yourselves on the back. I don't care what anybody else says. You're all great and I'll preach till I die.
That's right. Good job.
I'll pass that along to everybody who was involved. Thank you.